Welcome, everyone. I am calling the Tuesday, July 9th already, Tom Water City Council Joint Meeting with the Planning Commission to Order. And with that, we will start with roll call. I will call on council members and I will have the Chair of the Plan Commission call on the members of the Plan Commission. So with that, Councilmember Kathy.
Present.
Councilmember Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Agabi.
I'm present.
Okay, Councilmember Althouser.
Present. Sorry, I can't be there with you guys in person today.
That's all right. Councilmember Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Van Holtz.
Present.
And Councilmember Dahlhoff is excused this evening. So we will now do the Planning Commission.
Great. Commissioner Edwards.
Present.
Commissioner Staff.
Here.
Mr. Kurt Patrick.
Here.
Commissioner Tobias.
Here.
Commissioner Varela is excused, and I'm Commissioner Roberts.
Great, thank you. All right. The item that we have for our joint meeting is the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, the Climate Element, and I will turn it over to Brad to get us started. Oh, is there a question?
What was the question? Is the video feed live for us and we're just not seeing it? Or are we just on audio? I just wanted to make sure that the folks who are watching this evening. Okay.
Right.
Well, thank you again. This again is a second Plan Commission session. Topics nine would be climate elements. Those were, thank you. It's only been a work request for two years now. No, I was all set. Do will be going through a presentation that's similar to the format of a past presentation. This is the Council. Planning Commission questions. Hopefully, this will be affordable. Looking or dashing to this.
Thank you for having me. And keep thinking of the new position. As Brad said, talking about the climate element tonight, which is the new requirement for the comprehensive plan. Like to discuss the requirements and how we plan to incorporate them and what we have done to date. Progress on that. The new state climate element requirement is that there are two sub-elements. The first one being the climate mitigation sub-element, and that's something that we're used to with the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, being focused on greenhouse gas production. This also includes vehicle miles traveled reductions that's required per capita. The other sub-element is climate resilience, focusing on climate adaptation to the hazards that will impact Tom Water or may already be impacting some. We also need to incorporate environmental justice throughout both the climate elements and throughout the other elements as well to avoid adding, burning, or worsening impacts that are already happening. The climate mitigation sub-element looks to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Those are carbon dioxide methane, nitric oxide, hydrofluorocarbons, one that I'm especially passionate about, and other gases designated by the state. So these are gases that get trapped in our atmosphere, that cause heating through the greenhouse effect, that cause global warming, and the climate changes that do from past. This new climate mitigation sub-element has required to have more ambitious goals for greenhouse gas reduction than we currently do through the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and the regional greenhouse gas targets, which right now are 85% by 2050. Now, this new state requirement will be apt to meet net zero emissions by 2050 to be consistent with Washington State. We will be adding goals and strategies to the climate greenhouse gas emission production sub-element that are from the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, because a lot of really great work went into the development of that plan. But like I said, that plan aims to get us to 85% reduction, so we'll need to fill in the gaps to get to net zero with some additional policies. Department of Commerce put together a nice lengthy document that was in your packet tonight, and then a new version of that. Or an older version, you have the newer version, and that's still not the final version of guidance for the climate elements. So stay tuned for any new changes. But they've been really purposeful about creating pathways to be clear about exactly what's required and what options jurisdictions have. So this here is the pathway options for climate mitigation, and we'll be doing a mix of both pathway one and pathway three. So Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative just completed a new 2022 greenhouse gas emission inventory, and the Department of Commerce has also decided to start up doing greenhouse gas emission inventory through the same year for the 11 most populous counties in the state. So we'll have two greenhouse gas inventories using the same protocol, but there might be some slight differences depending on what data sources, especially for vehicle miles traveled. If they chose one model for commerce and we chose a different model, both are appropriate, good, but greenhouse gas emission inventories are mostly models. There's lots of good activity data for electricity and natural gas consumption, but things like DMT are modeled. There might be some slight differences. But we'll be using the county-wide greenhouse gas inventory, which is pathway three, and we'll be creating a greenhouse gas estimate for the city of Tom Water. To combine those two, have a good idea of what we're contributing to, but we already have a good idea for what the community's in general. I just referred to the 2022 Thurston County Greenhouse Gas Emission Inventory that was just completed by the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative. Not great news, we are trending in the wrong direction. Instead of reducing on trends like we should, in 2022, greenhouse gas emissions were 6.2% higher than our baseline in 2015. Like in most years that we've done this inventory, the majority of the emissions are coming from the buildings and energy sector. So that's residential, commercial, and industrial buildings, as well as the use of energy and transition of energy. And then the second largest is our transportation sector, and that's mostly on-road vehicles. There is, of course, maritime and airports. Go into that, but it's mostly on-road vehicles. And then the smaller portions are fugitive emissions, which is like hydrofluorocarbons, agriculture, and solid waste. Any questions on the greenhouse gas sub-element?
Did you, where did we spike up? Was it the transportation or the building or?
Actually, building went down and transportation, I think, was relatively constant. The actually ended increasing in solid waste and wastewater is one of the bigger ones, mostly because of solid waste. Since COVID, people have been producing more solid waste, and more solid waste has been being thrown away in Thurston County. So the increased punish of that, also paired with the fact that we truck our waste many miles away, many dozens of miles away, through the landfill contributes to those emissions. Transportation emissions, I believe, did go up a little bit, but the buildings and energy actually is good. Been focusing a lot of time and energy in that, and the new state building code will be helping with that in the future. Initiative, that is a big sector and it needs the most work, but that one is turning in the right direction. The others still need. And a lot of things for the transportation sector. We could put something in place today, but it's going to take a number of years to start to see those benefits. So the climate resilient sub-element, much like the greenhouse gas element, we have kind of steps and pathways to pursue that are prescribed by Department of Commerce. First thing that we are to do is to explore climate impacts, and that's using a University of Washington Climate Impact Tool that looks at all the different climate hazards and all the different sensitivities on a county basis. There are some grids that make it so that you can add it more fine resolution than the county, but not so much that we can see some water specifically. Then we'll audit our plans and policies. I think there's a requirement that we have to do three. Right now, our consultant has a list of resources that they think well over 100 different plans that they're looking at. So we're going above and beyond the requirements for that. So look at all the different aspects of work that has been done already in this arena for climate resilience and what gas we need to fill to meet the requirements. Then we'll assess vulnerability and risk, looking at those climate hazard and asset pairs. So one, for instance, that we've been talking about is vulnerable populations in extreme heat, which we're probably thinking about quite a bit during this short heat wave. Another one is historical carbon sea level rise when the damage removed. Will be subject to that climate hazard, where we would have that otherwise. And we'll need to analyze those risks and what that will do to that. Well, then, first the pathways. We're going to do kind of a mix of all of these, by understanding. Our Hazard Mitigation Plan, Thurston County Hazard Mitigation Plan, is a substantial performance, so that really helps us. Also, the Thurston Climate Adaptation Plan has a lot of good policies. The City Council did not adopt that plan, but it is still useful regionally and we can still adopt some of those policies. And then we'll have to adapt or add new goals and strategies to meet those requirements of Commerce and do a good job to get our community. We'll need to make sure that everything in that sub-element is consistent throughout the entire comprehensive plan, much like the greenhouse gas sub-element as well. So like I said, the Thurston Hazard Mitigation Plan is a substantial performance, and we have the Thurston Climate Adaptation Plan. Commerce also put together a handy-dandy Excel sheet, huge Excel document bookbook, that our consultants are using to look at all the different climate asset and hazard pairs, the greenhouse gas element, our climate policy advisory team, which I'll get into in a little bit, to make sure that we're covering all of our bases and meeting all of the requirements and having the documentation to show that we did that work and tie it to the policies that we'll be proposing. In at least the resilient sub-element, and we're going to strive to for the greenhouse gas sub-element, we need to have at least one goal per sector, and these are the 11 sectors dictated by Rose Management Act and HB 1181. So agriculture and food systems, building to energy, cultural resources, economic development, emergency management, health and well-being, ecosystem, transportation, waste management, water resources, and zoning developments. Quite a few areas to touch on, but luckily, a lot of those overlap, so it should be. And that third part that I mentioned, separate from the sub-element, is incorporating environmental justice throughout the entire climate element. So we need to prioritize greenhouse gas reductions over burdened communities and prioritize climate resilience to communities that are disproportionately or will disproportionately suffer from those impacts. There are a lot of different maps to use to identify those areas that are overburdened, and Department of Policy has a map of what they're defining as overburdened communities for the HEAL Act and other environmental justice state actions, which do not have any sense of tracks in Tom Water. So that particular definition doesn't impact us here, but there are still people that are suffering disproportionate impacts or have less of an ability to bounce back if they're faced with hazards. This map here is one that I use pretty frequently, and this is the Washington Department of Health Environmental Health disparities map. You can see that we have underneath the photos there, this goes up to 10. It's a ranking from 1 to 10. This is based off of a similar map that the state of California did that has been highly regarded. The higher the score, the darker the color, the more environmental health disparities there are. So you can see that we have an eight in our community, which is that darker section, and a seven, which is the other part of Tom Water, and less environmental health disparities on the northern part of the city, but there are different demographics up there. There's more people of color in that particular area. So we'll be taking all of that into consideration.
Remember, Tacoma was doing, or they did do a study, but it was very in-depth as far as the GFC. They could like go into each community and they, it was based on not only just areas like that, but education, just all, just this whole gamut of information that they gathered by doing that. And I thought that Thurston County, that this area, that we were going to.
Tom Water did for our Stormwater program, and we stepped away from it thinking, having less confidence that it was going to be effective. For instance, one of the aspects of the index that wasn't put in there, which is largely one of the greatest indicators of injustice, grace was left out entirely of that. So we're not using that one. There are better federal or mostly federal and state tools that do incorporate all the different aspects of. We tried, but we're going to try to use the tools. So progress update to date. We've hired EXP as a consultant, and it's my understanding that we have two of our consultants here in the virtual room to answer any questions that maybe I can't answer immediately, and we might ask them to say hello in the next slide when I speak to them. But we've done the Community Advisory Visioning and Values exercise with the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative. We drafted community engagement strategy, put together a climate policy advisory team, which is a specific recommendation from the Department of Commerce Guidance. And we have scheduled it open house. Those of you who are here in person, I put a flyer at your seat for the open house. And I'll be going into each of these in a little bit more detail. We hired EXP, which is a multidisciplinary planning, design, and engineering firm. We held a competitive facilitation process, and they were selected to do the work. Karen Bolter is our project manager, and Louis is our sustainability lead. If they are, are they smelling any heels there in the room? Is it okay if I ask them to say hello?
We're here. Can you hear me?
Hey, hi Karen.
Hi.
Everybody.
Thank you, Karen and Louis. So that second item that I have there is the TCMC Community Advisory Work Group Visioning Session. Now, before I go into this, is everyone in the room familiar with the TCMC or the Community Advisory Group? The Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative is a new umbrella term for the implementation of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and the three bodies that kind of are part of that influence. I can see there's four bodies. The jurisdictions, the executive committee of which Councilmember Swarthout is on the executive committee. And we have a community advisory work group made up of people from the community with different varying perspectives and life experiences to provide guidance and input, feedback, tell us the things that we've overlooked or never thought of to make policies and programs work better and are less people and a bit more people. And then we have the staff team, which I'm a member of, and each of the four jurisdictions, Thurston County, L.A., and Tom Water, we each have one staff member that's on the staff team. We all, all the different bodies meet at varying amounts, have different roles, and there's an inter-local agreement and a guidance document that if you're interested in learning more about that particular structure, I'm happy to share with you. But the Community Advisory Work Group, a number of months ago, we asked them to do this overarching visioning exercise using these digital post-it notes, because they meet virtually, for the whole region. So this is something that was done to be helpful to all four jurisdictions related to the TCMC and the TCAP. So there's a couple of these slides. I'll just run along some of the post-it notes here. Members of the Community Advisory Work Group, ORC for short. May value fairness, equity, approach in all aspects, justice, learning and being flexible by doing, transparency, solutions that prioritize well-being, and holistic solutions to systems and approach to problem solving. The exhaustive list, I'm not going to read them all, but there's a number of these. May value in climate action work and resiliency, receive education everywhere, to be able to bike safely and easily around the county, willingness to break boundaries and rules for the greater good, a willingness to take necessary risks, 100% clean energy, safe, walkable communities, large-scale climate coalition, and to embrace new cultural norms that are environmentally conscious. What they hope will be true about the Thurston region in the future is effective public housing, safe spaces for all, slow vehicles down, more ways of connecting with communities since the government cannot solve all climate issues for instant city hosted resource bank, community response teams. Hope that there will be more locally produced food, affordable housing, preserve farmland, increase incentives for urban agriculture. And what they want to see preserved is agricultural land, urban trails, bike lanes, having community voices, spurred honoring tribal backgrounds. I think this is the last one.
Mike, I have a question.
Yeah, back there, is that the CAW? CAW, what is that?
The Community Advisory Workers, so those groups are part of.
Thank you.
What they want to see improved, enhanced, created, if it doesn't exist now, a better bus system, safer and more bike lanes, gardens in every school, walkable community gardens, repair fish passage barriers, increase mass transit, a bit taller buildings downtown, multi-use paths that connect parts of neighborhoods and urban farmland. There's a lot of different ones here, and I think the packet included the presentations. If you want to read all of the post-it notes, they're all over them. So I'll move over to the Community Engagement Strategy. This is a word cloud that the consultants made with the words from the strategy and beautiful picture from over the top. There are 10 goals for the Community Engagement Strategy, and I'm going to read them all to you. We'll try to speak not too fast, but I am a fast. Understand why and how residents' services and processes need to change and to develop to increase greenhouse gas production and climate resilience. Engage the broader community, ensuring sufficient representation from diverse groups through in-person, virtual, or hybrid outreach to both digital and printed resources. Keep people where they are and ensure that all engagement efforts are accessible and equitable. This means not excluding anyone with certain health, physical, or working conditions, and it requires that needs around language, mobility, or family care are thoughtful. Keep the energy positive and focus on success stories while also stressing the need for action and potential risks. Work fair and consistent messaging to current and potential stakeholders that communicate the importance of the climate element. Be responsive to community insights and allow for shared influence between communities and the organizations that serve them. Focus on reducing inequalities and fostering greater community ownership of the climate element, which will lead to equitable outcomes to benefit frontline communities. See combat to intentionally allocate resources to overcome the cumulative impact of institutional racism on historically underserved and underrepresented people. Articulate Tom Water's role as a climate leader, aligning with county, state priorities, and harnessing local experience and expertise. Position Tom Water staff and residents to make better informed decisions, drive smarter investments, a city that develops a safely and healthier environment even with growing climate. Lots of questions. The goal of the engagement for the climate element. Be trying to deploy a number of different strategies. Community-wide surveys, open houses and public workshops like this one, small group workshops and community dialogues, pop-up events and door knocking, and passive engagement. We have some engagement themes and topics. Some of those themes and top line messages, I'll try not to read all of these, but it is my fault, the words, my fault. Characterization and background of the themes. For the topic is that every fraction of a degree of warming counts that we want to be net zero by 2050, and that there are regulatory and legislative drivers that are going to help us get there. Planning process, internal group activities and priorities of the city departments, officials, community-wide activities as well. Want to make sure that people understand the fact base about climate change. Sometimes that's an issue, so we want to talk about how climate change is caused by human activities. That there are local and global impacts, that is caused by greenhouse gas emissions, and having people understand different climate vulnerability risks, resilience, that different people are more sensitive to climate hazards. Equity, we want to understand and identify and address existing disparities in the asset across demographics, socioeconomic status, race, ethnicity, gender identity, and ability, and note that climate vulnerability is highest in communities that are frontline communities disproportionately. Goals, that we will have both short and long-term emission reduction goals, and that the two main areas that we need to get a lot of work done in is transportation and land use. Those are also some of the areas that the city has some of the most leverage and ability to. Climate resilience and adaptation, we'll have sector and asset-specific goals. There's a lot here of policies. We'll have many policies to make sure that we're addressing those 11 sectors with the cutest icons from before. And we want this climate element to be implementable. So we want to have the roles and responsibilities of how we do those actions identified. Want to make it clear we need to do inter-organizational formation, have a criteria to have prioritized actions in there. We want to make sure that it's feasible, so having a cost estimation, labor capacity, and ways to measure and monitor overtime. We will have four different phases for engagement. Right now, we're in listening, even though I fully recognize I'm talking a lot at you right now. We'll be doing that over the summer. That's the open house. We already had our CPAT kickoff, the Climate Policy Action, our advisory team. I'll get to the next slide, so stay tuned. Then we'll be doing visioning with the Community Advisory Work Group, the people that just posted notes, more visioning, and then strategizing and finalizing through March 2025. That'll be greeting and work sessions with you all, and also the General Government Committee to bring you the draft element language and usher along for everyone to be happy, to meet state requirements, and to get our community better situated for addressing climate. So we put together a climate policy advisory team. This was a specific suggestion from the Department of Commerce, and we focused on four different buckets of affiliations or life experiences for the people that we invited. We, I think initially invited, we created a list of about 45 and then joined a list to about 18, reached out to about 18, and we have 12 or 13 members that have signed on and have committed to being part of this. The four buckets, government, so that's city staff and departments, county government, tribal nations, and public agencies, affected populations, so Black and Indigenous people of color, youth and elderly, low-income folks, workers and labor unions, people with disability, and people who are immunocompromised, community members, so local businesses, nonprofit organizations, community-based organizations, charities, and religious groups, and expertise, colleges and universities, research organizations, city consultants that have. It's uncomfortable to put people in buckets, but we try. Some people are in more than one bucket, which you'll see here where I have some. In the packet, I have some semicolons to have the multiple buckets for each. Our climate policy advisory team is as pictured here on a computer. It's from FEIU 775, Service Employees International Union, so it's long-term caretakers. Anthony Lavanda is from Evergreen Section for Climate Action and Sustainability. Bernie Gertie is from the city. He's our transportation engineer and avid bike commuter, bike everything. Bryson is from IDEW 76, from the Leadership Team, so the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. A lot of the solutions for climate change and reducing greenhouse gas emissions have to do with electrifying everything, so we wanted to make sure that we actually have two members from IDEW at the table. One in leadership and one that's a rank-and-file member and a newly, almost adjourned man, but an apprentice. Gordon Reese is a physician in town, and he's part of the Position for Social Responsibility. Graham Pultner is a resident and also an organizer for the Oil and Gas Action Network. It is an anti-pipeline, direct action organization. Janine Lindsay, from Thurston Climate Action Team and Tom Water property owner. Jesse Simmons, from Olympia Master Builders. Carrie Wilson, from Inter-City Transit, Walk and Roll, she's also a Tom Water resident. Princess Q, restoring earth connections in front of trees. Morris McHellery, an affected population Tom Water resident, from Medicine Library in Mount St. Rachel Childs, from Home First, and Susan Warner, from a different chapter of IDEW, a rank-and-file member. So we tried to get a, really tried to fill in the buckets and lean more heavily towards affected populations, as much as we could make sure that we're getting where we need to be. I'm just now realizing I put a lot of text on all of these slides, and I apologize. We had our first CPAT meeting, which was actually four meetings, because schedules are hard in the summer. We had two in-person remote kickoffs and then two one-on-one meetings for those that just couldn't make it to their time. We will be having the rest of the meetings all together, but we wanted to make sure that we got the kickoff started and got the process moving along, because this is a lot of work that everyone's going to be doing to create development. So some of the feedback that we got from the CPAT from those kickoff meetings is that they wanted the open house to feel welcoming, that we needed to provide food, and that maybe we shouldn't hold it in council chambers so that everyone feels comfortable. So some staff follow-up, we're trying to keep a log of the suggestions that we get and our accountability and our results from receiving that CPAT. Staff are committed to providing food for the advert, for the open house. We're advertising that food will be there. And we have picture and actual community, cultural community center as a location for the meeting. We also addressed that engagement needs to be more than one open house. For instance, tabling at parks, door-to-door knocking in neighborhoods that are more disadvantaged or overburdened, or even tabling at the Department of Social and Health Services. We are working, staff and CPAT members are working together to identify those tabling locations. I'm trying to get a table at a Northwest Resources Fair, specifically for people with disabilities, for low and moderate income residents who are seeking services. Trying to get a table there on the 17th, that'll be one of our first tabling experiences. I table at the Tom Water satellite location of the Thurston County Food Bank on a quarterly basis. That'll be another location, and I'll be working with the CPAT members to do tabling and other things, like special Olympics practices in Tom Water, or popping up at Pioneer Park at the next Sunday day. And hoping that people will come talk to us about climate. We've heard that we want more focus on urban forests of Tom Water, both as mitigation and adaptation to climate change. So we're going to make sure that urban forest is incorporated into the open house tables for both mitigation and adaptation, and that we want to include youth. I've reached out to the Thurston Youth Climate Coalition to see if we can have a special youth caucus at the open house. youth caucus at the open house. We've heard that they wanted to distribute a save-the-date flyer that clearly communicates how people will be expected to participate, so we're working on that. The flyer is here. If you feel that that doesn't quite do that, please let me know, and we'll continue to tweak it. It hasn't gone out anywhere except for the table. And to provide space for casual activities and a large group of listening session, and to provide options for people to engage, people to engage who may be less likely to be in the house. As a former Schuyt person, I appreciate it. So we'll have little boxes, keep the paper, and we'll have a listening session kind of part at the end of the meeting. So that's just an example of some of the feedback that we've already received from this one meeting with the CPAT about making this effort better, more likely to reach members of our community that we might not have before, to make sure that their input is incorporated and part of the future. So that climate element open house, the in-person will be happening on August 14, 7 to 9 p.m. at OSHA. We have a QR code here for people to register, so that we know how many boxes people get, so that we don't have food waste. And virtual online will start the day after. In-person open house, and it will be open for a little over a month. It'll be available 24/7 on the website. It'll be translatable using Google Translate, which isn't the best translator, but is something. It'll be hosted as an online story map, 24/7 access, similar to the something one that is still up today. This is our general schedule, so we've already done the project kickoff. Have in your packet the public engagement strategy and agenda and targeted outreach plans, and now we're in the summer place from before, the third little bubble of implementing the equity-driven agenda and engagement. Also, the consultants are working on document reviewing, app analysis, and drafting the subelements at the same time, of course incorporating all of that community engagement and stakeholder outreach that we received, the feedback, and having that accountability kind of ledger of what we heard and how we're incorporating it or not. Then we'll have a consistency and integration memorandum, so we can provide that to Department of Commerce, saying that assistance throughout the entire comprehensive plan. We'll then define the draft and update the feedback September, November 2024, and then we'll start finalizing and starting the formal approval process in 2025, like we discussed. Lot of work to do. So just reiterating, there is a project website for the overall periodic update of the comprehensive plan, which that does include climate element information on the city periodic update webpage, looks like this screenshot on the left. It would just keep getting larger and larger, the accordion is getting ever stretched. If anyone wants to submit comments or questions from the general public, they can do that by emailing coplanetci@tomwater.wad.us, or reaching out to Brad in general, who is here. And I have some discussion questions, but generally I just want to hear from you about what the city council, planning commission, and vision and values for the climate element? Is there anything missing from our engagement strategy or the overall process that you think needs to be addressed? Any general feedback about where we are to date so far? This is the last one.
So I haven't really followed the technological developments over the recent years, but where are we at with carbon capture technology? Is that like still sort of like science fiction level, you know, years in the future? Or are we like getting to a point where we can start like sort of trapping some of our greenhouse gases or emissions, processing them?
Well, there's a very old carbon capture of nature that is doing really well, and that's something that we can employ. Then there's a technological carbon catcher, which has been deployed, is not widespread like availability. A lot of larger corporations that are depending on carbon offsets are kind of buying up all of the opportunities to use that kind of stuff. Not really what we should depend on. We need to change system structures to really get where we need to be. And I doubt that we would have the funding to be able to participate something like that to make even the 85 to net zero. But it is something that does exist, and that is being used. I can't speak highly enough of the tool that's created by MIT called Climate Enroads, it's E-N-ROADS. It's a tool that you can use that has all these different toggles, and you can look at the global average temperature, drop or go up, depending on how you're toggling, all of the options in the toggle. I realize I see this in my brain and you don't, but there are like 20 different toggling things for different climate solutions that are set at reasonable levels, like actually feasible, not like if we re-forced it the entire world and all of a sudden. So all different options, you can do them in different orders, but you can see how it affects the global increase of temperature, and carbon capture says very little to change in the feasible mapping. But it is one of those toggles, the tools in the toolbox.
The last piece you just talked about, is that part of what we'll be working on as well, or when we come up with policy suggestions, that you throw it into your little?
So that's like a global model. They don't have a scale down for us to kind of plug those things in. However, the Department of Commerce greenhouse gas inventory that they're doing for Thurston County, they are creating a wedge. So a wedge analysis is like where we could be going in terms of the graph of greenhouse gas emissions and where we need to be, and little pieces of pie in there, kind of the stratification of the mountains, the different soil levels, of what different actions can get down to what level. So we'll see from that wedge that they create, the one from the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, for instance, the Climate Commitment Act has an impact at that point, the clean fuel standards has an impact at that point, so this will kind of update for those different state levers that have been pulled, and where the gap is from those state and federal actions. Also, that wedge from the plan was prior to the Inflation Reduction Act. So there's been a lot of larger policy changes that have happened since then that will likely make it so that we have less to do, but still a tremendous amount in that left to do for local governments. The wedge will help us in kind of scale down the MIT goal for Thurston.
What's that tool, would that be a example?
I don't know when the wedge is going to be done, but the greenhouse gas inventory is here. We've been contacting the county specifically, probably not necessarily for maybe Thurston.
I want to hog on the question.
Go ahead.
So on the community engagement piece, as far as your tabling goes, what does that look like, and what's your feedback on that? Or are they surprised we have climate change, or you know, what's going on with that?
So we haven't done tabling on this yet.
Okay. But you could have the food bank, I thought.
Yes, so I go to the food bank on a quarterly basis to try and, at one point, is to recruit people for the community advisory workgroup. I also do the Tomwater Resources and Sustainability Department. We give away information on the city of Tomwater's lifeline program. A lot of people don't know that we do this. Water incentives, generally just trying to build relationships and trust with the clients that come to the bank, many of which are Tomwater residents. That's what I've been doing in terms of the tabling the past two years at the food bank. Each time I go, there's kind of a different special topic. And thankfully, for better or for worse, the clients are often the same, so I've built relationships. I'd like it if they could be out of food insecurity, but I didn't have to go there to speak to them, but through some building relationships, and I get fun questions about this tree and that tree, and why can't the sewer go to my house? But it's been a good effort, and I think I've built up enough trust that I can start to talk about controversial issues that aren't, that shouldn't be controversial, such as anthropogenic climate change. But maybe to get.
I see Councilwoman Kathy's hand to the.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that detailed report. It's a lot to take in, a lot to think about. Was all of that, or most of that, specific to Tomwater? I mean, things we're going to do, we're going to look at, we're going to talk about, is going to be part of, you know, tree boards and council and all of that kind of stuff? Where does this all come in? Because some of the things that we've talked about for years may or may not have been on there, you know? I mean, I don't know in Tomwater, where are the areas of environmental injustice, for example? Or, you know, a lot of the things that people wrote down on there are creating more emissions and less conversation about carbon capture or trees or that kind of thing. I'm just wondering where is this specific to Tomwater, and how, after this extensive reporting, how do we involve ourselves in it rather, other than going to one of these community meetings, which is not always what council's encouraged to do? So I'm frustrated about, you know, but it's so much, and it's so good, and how do we get it to the, literally to the ground level?
So everything as showed in the presentation is Tomwater-specific. The only thing that I would say isn't Tomwater-specific is our greenhouse gas inventory that we're utilizing, that's at the county scale. But like I said, we'll be creating an estimate for Tomwater emissions, short of doing an entire greenhouse gas inventory, which normally costs about $15,000 to $20,000. We'll be doing an estimate and using the countywide. There will be opportunities with the online open house. If you don't feel comfortable coming to the open house, that's one option out that kind of sounds to fit within the constraints that you feel you're in. We have the general comments, and I know that you can always go through the mayor and the city administrator to share things with individual staff members. We want the city council and planning commission to be involved and to like the direction that things are going, so we'll be having frequent check-ins and progress updates. And you can always, through the mayor and the city administrator, ask for more frequent updates if we're not doing them fast enough for you as well. Do you have anything to add to that, Brad?
I have one more question on there. You said one of the things in one of those charts was to get, let's see, new goals and policies. Does that impact, and obviously you say all of this impacts us, but what would that take the form of, or do you have an idea of that? New goals for climate change, new goals for, and making new policies for land use, or, you know, tree removal or whatever, is that what that means?
So we'll have to make a lot of new policies for the climate resilience sub-element, whatever is not covered by the Thurston Hazards Mitigation Plan and the Thurston Climate Adaptation Plan. So we have adopted the Thurston Hazards Mitigation Plan, but like I said before, we didn't ever adopt the Thurston Adaptation Plan, so we only have those policies and goals on the books from the Thurston Hazards Mitigation Plan, and there is some gap to fill in to meet those 11 sectors and to meet the state requirements. So there will be definitely new policies for that, and we'll have to add some additional actions to get to the net zero, or to strategize a way to get to net zero emissions beyond what we have in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and other efforts by the city. So there is a gap, we need to fill in both of those, and that will be the content of the climate element, part of the comprehensive plan, and the same structure that all the rest of the elements of the comprehensive plan are put together in.
And Joan, we're also looking at, as part of our policy updates for all the other elements, connections between the various elements and things that we can draw out. There are obviously some comprehensive plan-wide goals that we want to call out that are very important to us from equity and so forth. But the work that's being done on the climate element will be informing the other elements and vice versa. So you'll see a lot of draft formats as we go forward, because really we're trying to see how we can move it all forward at once.
And a good example of that is the transportation element, a part of our grant from the Department of Commerce to do this climate element development. We set aside $100,000 of that grant to go towards the transportation element and the development of Tomwater's first, to my knowledge, bike and pedestrian plan. So one of the greenhouse gas reduction sub-element requirements is to reduce per capita VMT. So by having this in a different element where it's most appropriate, but still helping us meet the goals that are required, we'll have consistency and these goals and strategies spread throughout the plan to make sure that all the different ways in which we can approach reducing climate change that are applicable to the different elements are consistent and also helping us get there. Where it's most appropriate, we'll put them.
I appreciate this report and your response. It's clarifying, and appreciate what you said, Brad. We've already done a lot of work in this, and we're, you know, and over this spans many years, and so as we're witnessing these days, climate change is absolutely critical to be, you know, to do this work, and I think we need to highlight it in our city and that we're working on all these things, and that people need to know what's happening and how much work has been put into this. So thank you for that, I appreciate it.
I'm wondering if you have a sense already, or when you might have, of what kind of resources, money, or whatever, are going to be needed for the actions that we need to take?
Great question, and that is something that we hope will be part of the end result of having that first draft or that second draft of the element itself. Like I shared, we want to make sure that it's implementable, so knowing exactly how much any of those particular actions will be. Unfortunately, fortunately and unfortunately, in terms of climate action locally and nationally, we've done a lot of like the low-hanging fruit, and now it's time for the hard stuff, the hard system-changing stuff that either takes more time, takes more money, is more difficult, is more contentious, but we're going to, we have, we will have a new goal that is a science-based target. We'll have to, and we need to get there for, it's a nation-state-based goal that we as a local government are expected to meet, so it's interesting in the scope of, it's the same goal that nations have, that we have for our smaller, much less resourced jurisdictions. So we'll try to have things that are realistic in terms of being able, that we can actually do them, and that they will actually get the results.
Have we looked at our peers around us, what they're doing? Are there similar case studies around us? And then you brought up on the national level, are there other sized jurisdictions similar to us that have been doing certain things in their area that have been really successful? The other thing I've noticed, driving around a little bit north from here, I see a lot more solar panels and different modes of power, and I don't see that as much down here in Tomwater. I don't know if there's other levels, levers we can pull with PSC or with different governments down here, get more of that.
To the question about how much we're seeing that here, I encourage you to look at Tomwater's solar dashboard that I update on a monthly basis with all of our solar permits and installations. There's a map of how many solar permits we've had over the number of years, and it is going up. It doesn't compare us to cities like La Viera or Dixie, because I don't have access to their permit system, but it is trending in the right direction in terms of solar installations of the city. And in terms of if we're talking to other jurisdictions, part of that Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative is that staff team, and I meet with the other climate staff at the least frequent every other week, sometimes it's multiple times a week, where we're talking and sharing what we're doing, how we're doing our comp plans, what we're doing in terms of the regional initiatives that we've all planned to work on together, issues that we're facing, and if others have found solutions outside of the region. The city is also part of the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, which is a peer network of other people in my type position, sustainability coordinators, managers, directors from all throughout North America, including Canada. And we share documents, policies, lessons learned, failures, and what we learned from them on a very regular basis. There's peer learning groups that I participate in, there's kind of a question and answer. Does anyone have a draft RFP for this particular thing? And then within USDN, or the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, there's a subgroup that I'm also active in for the Cascadia Bio Region, so that's people in my position that are working on this work from Oregon, Washington, and British Columbia. And I was up in British Columbia earlier this month at a two-day annual meeting, talking about our trials and regulations, the success that other people have had, or their failures and what they've learned from it. So very much in touch with what other people are doing and other solutions that have turned out to be useful, and either similarly resourced cities or larger cities, and models to make it so that we don't have to reinforce. it so that we don't have to reinforce.
Final question, if you had a big lever to pull, what's that biggest lever that you feel we could and should pull that we haven't, that kind of hire the fruit, the tire up on the tree, if you want to put it that way?
Fossil fuels is what we need to stop using.
And I brought up in our planning commission, I haven't seen as many charging stations in Tumwater specifically as I have in other cities. Is that something that we're leaning more towards or looking more towards, trying to get some of those groups to bring those stations in?
I am spending a lot of my time planning our fleet charging for expanding our municipal fleet and electrifying that, as well as trying to provide public charging wherever the city can. Not sure if you heard, but we've been in the news recently about a city council and the mayor approving a pilot project for a solar-powered off-grid EV charger that we'll be deploying at Pioneer Park. That will, that pilot will help us hopefully figure out if this is a deployable solution for other areas of the city that the city owns property, but there's not the electrical capacity to add EV chargers, or we can't trench things like athletic fields in the middle of the summer when people are playing soccer and stuff like that. So we're looking at different innovative solutions and extending and expanding charging periods. There's some, there's a lot of grants out there for that right now. There are some limitations for the federal funding related to EV charging and expanding EV charging that the city can apply to. There's lots of opportunities for public and, or for private entities, others, to add charging, but for the federal charging, and I realize I'm going down a rabbit hole here, you have to be more than fifty miles from a fast charger that is, meets all the requirements, and we have one right here in the middle of the city of the Shell. So I can't apply for any of that funding. So there's what we can do, and I'm trying to go after every grant that I can that were well-suited to be awarded, and a lot of those right now are EV. And I'm an EV driver myself, so I, I want to see more charging around.
Same here.
Think about the interconnected piece of it, because we've talked about this in meetings before. For me, it's like, is there something that would, you know, we're all the charging, that we're doing it on a coordinated effort rather than piecemeal? Because my son took his truck, his EV truck, from Mount Lake Terrace all the way up to Canada, like in the round bath, and he was able to charge all the way up. And so, there's some intuition, you know, so for the outdoor people. But I'm just curious, you know, how, what the math looks like, or are we doing it in an effort, in a way that makes sense that, you know, we're, we're hitting, you know, the fifty miles or, you know, so people can charge?
There's multiple different approaches to how we deploy EV charging infrastructure. There's the, for road trips, and that's along highways. There's also the places where it's harder to install them, and that's in multifamily housing and places where multifamily tenants can have access to charging. And in some places, that's like trying to incorporate EV rideshares in the area and having a charging depots or hubs for that. So there's kind of a number of different approaches. The way that I've been approaching it with the funding that's available right now is where, what properties does the city own that I can deploy charging on? Kind of, that's the low hanging fruit right now, is where do we have the authority or the permission to put that in? The private market is putting it where they find, market analysis wants to put it. A lot of that is not in Tumwater. But PlugShare is one app that I use as an EV driver that shows you where all the different chargers are, and we have a growing number in Tumwater, more than when I first started this job, but still not as many as our neighbors, for sure.
Have we asked those private entities if they are willing to, or have they thought about putting in, like Safeway, for example, is one that commonly has chargers throughout other locations? Have we just approached them and said, hey, have you thought about putting this in? Here are the benefits, and maybe they say yes?
I have not personally. I, the Thurston Climate Action Team has an EV Action Group that I participate in, and not for commercial businesses, but for multifamily housing. They're trying to target some of the multifamily housing developments and ask, make them aware of free programs that are available. For instance, PSC has a program where they will turnkey install at no cost to the landlord EV charging at apartment buildings. There's been a really low uptake, uptake of that in Thurston County, where most of those chargers have been deployed in Kink County, Pierce County. But we are participating in a program with PSC. We're going to be one of the first communities to deploy on-street elevated charging, and we're working with them to identify those areas. We'll be doing community outreach about that. But I have not reached out to, like, for-profit businesses directly. I have, half of my job is climate right now, and the other half is urban forest, so my capacity is somewhat limited to, I'm just going after all the grants right now and trying to get the money for what I, what I can do.
I like that, that's good.
But I will eventually reach out, because I know that the companies have probably the best market analysis for where the chargers could go, and I don't want to duplicate efforts by not knowing that information, so.
Going back to your description a little while ago about the Commerce tool, the Wedge tool, I think you called it? I would like to see a demonstration of that, even if it's like beta version or something, since we're likely to see its use, I think you said. I'd kind of like to understand, not totally nuts and bolts, but I'd like to see how it works, what kind of data it uses, and what, you know, what kind of confidence we might have if we plug in a policy that we're contemplating, how, what's it gonna do, kind of a thing? Is that possible?
I can reach out to Commerce to ask. The Wedge is not so much an interactive tool for the average person. The MIT Enroads absolutely is. The Wedge, it's through a website that the city doesn't have a membership to have access to. Very technical and not beautiful. It's not interactive.
I don't, I don't really want to get down into the horrible modeling guts of it, but I would like to understand whether what we're asking of it is telling us what we need to know.
We put in activity data to, so it's in a thing called ClearPath, which is one of the more commonly used tools for doing greenhouse gas inventories, where you put in your activity level and activity data, so kilowatt hours used in, and then you put in the emissions factor that's determined by percent of energy, and that kind of creates this, at this rate equals this much emission. And then with the Wedge, it's like a separate tab of that where you say, well, what if I reduced the kilowatt hours by this? Then you can see it go down, and you can change the numbers and see it kind of go up and down. Not immediately, you save it and then you look at it and then you try to remember where it was before, but you change the activity data. You keep the emissions factor and you say, okay, if I got this percentage of cars off the road, or this kind of mode shift, or less electricity or less natural gas, and you can see it's shifted in that way. But it's, it is kind of one hundred percent guts. But I can see, I'm sure that there are YouTube videos that talk about how a wedge is done, and I can reach out to Commerce to see if they was contemplating doing a demonstration so that members of the public everywhere throughout Washington can understand what the tool is and how it can be used.
Not that, then, you know, if we're gonna rely on that for some, for some policy decisions as a place, it seems like we ought to have a grasp of what's in there.
There are high-impact actions, no matter what, for our area that will have the biggest reduction, and we don't necessarily need to play with the Wedge to know what that is, which is reducing natural gas, reducing electricity consumption, reducing on-road travel, having a greater mode shift between bikes, walking transit, for instance, and less on-road travel. And that, that is the direction that we need to go, and that's what will move the Wedge to the most, without having to toy with it. Those are the high-impact actions.
Wanted to share, when I was looking at some of the, we were talking about multifamily units, and so the new apartment complex that's behind Artistry and Flowers and in that Safeway area, I was looking at the amenities they offer, and they have EV chargers there. And they also have the, the heating and cooling, the units that are up on the wall. And I was surprised because no one told them to do that at this point, and that they did it, because the state building code doesn't kick in yet. So I, I wonder about the other units. And the neat thing about that one is this one that we gave the eight-year deduction for, so, you know, we're getting, you know, we're getting chargers, we're getting some of these things, and it's walkable and all the things that we were looking for. So I thought, that's, that's pretty, I was just surprised they were already doing that.
Do good things without it being required sometimes.
Any other questions? All right, we're gonna be hearing much more. It's not going to be the only timed topic. So I'm sure things will be coming to planning commission, different general government probably, and council work sessions, and we'll all be hearing a lot. All right, so my understanding is that the planning commission doesn't have a meeting after this, is that correct?
Oh, you guys are lucky.
Get off.
Yeah.
They may go to stage.
Exactly. Probably.
It is also the council's, the next planning commission meeting will be August ten.
Yes, take it off. And if you want, just to put up in places that you visit in the community, feel free to.
The planning commissioners are excused, and we will go ahead in a moment and continue with our council work session. Thank you, everyone.
Talking about climate.
Again, yeah, thanks for having us, yeah.
It's a great question.
Oh, thank you.
My greatest, I wasn't a committee, and I don't. You can probably grab Michael's name tag.
And the fact that we.
Chief Hurley, you can probably just move that, the name tag in front of you down. Michael is on the.
Yeah.
Right.
Am I allowed to be next to him?
You are.
Am I allowed, am I allowed to be up here?
Something about her face, you know, I just wanted to be sure I'm on the right side of the camera, so.
All right, so now we are going to go to the fire department strategic plan briefing, and then, I believe this has gone to the public health and safety, no?
No, we hadn't. We just got it right to work session.
Perfect, all right, so this is our briefing on that, so I will turn it over to you, Chief Hurley.
I think we need just a minute. We're sharing a little bit of connection.
We're having some challenges.
Oh, not a problem.
Actually, I'll go ahead and give, give an introduction here while Richard's getting it up and running. Lasted to help us, we checked, it does work, so.
Okay.
So I just wanted to give a brief introduction and thank you, everyone, for giving us the opportunity to present tonight, and I just wanted to, you know, give a background here in that this is an update of our five-year strategic plan. Our previous plan technically ended in 2021, and as you know, that was, you know, the timeframe we were talking about, the regional fire authority. And really, rolling through 2022, we were very, very involved with RFA planning, and a number of you were, were very much involved in that. And although that, that didn't pass in 2023, we, we had planned to do an update of our strategic plan, and it was budgeted for in this, in this biennium. So at the end of last year, we did an RFQ for a consulting firm, selected that firm, and we began the work really in January of this year. Obviously, we had a lot of data to share and upload, and then in, in February, we had meetings here on site with the consulting firm, with city staff, fire department staff, union leadership, external stakeholders and partners, so Medic One, Olympia Fire, Lacey Fire are our partners, and our, and our community members, we did have a meeting as well. And I just wanted to share really, you know, the, the end result were two things, a, a five-year strategic plan, which we obviously took into account the city's strategic priorities and goals in doing this as well. And also part of it was an agency evaluation, which was really just an outside look at how we do business kind of compared to our peers and really national standards. And that's, that's what Richard is here to talk about tonight. So I'll introduce Richard Curtis from our consulting firm, Emergency Services Consulting International.
All right, thank you, chief. Good to be with you this evening, and those of you who are here are hybrid. I'm probably gonna do a little bit of a dance of the glasses and that, that sort of thing, if you understand that, that process. So I have what we call a story map, which is a little bit different than PowerPoint. It's a little bit better displaying maps, so it's a, but it's similar to a PowerPoint presentation. I have a lot of information to walk through, so I'm gonna move fairly quick. I would ask, if you have any burning questions, please interrupt me and just say, hey, I, I don't understand that, or let's talk about it, or answer a question. We should have some time afterwards as well to have some Q and A. And so my name is Richard Curtis. I'm a project manager with Emergency Services Consulting. I've been working for them for the last couple of years now, doing that. And before that, I retired out of Anacore's, Washington, as a fire chief in 2018, was with them for 22 years prior to that, and originally came from Oregon. And on this project, on this particular project, we had a couple of the team members that were, that are really fantastic. The first one on the left-hand side, Sterling Folden, he works for Mountain View Fire District in Colorado, and he works at a department that has ten fire stations, fully-staffed paid personnel. So it's a fairly large organization. Then Dwayne Bonet in the center is with him, and he works at, sorry, have to look, I don't have it on the screen. Yeah, Prince George's County Fire and EMS Agency in Virginia, which is a 22-station organization. So they, with the two of them coming together, bringing a lot of depth of experience and insight into this process. So we, we really enjoyed having them with us. There's a couple of the members that were on the, worked the back of the room, Katie Elashen, she does our GIS work, and then there's Rodney Mascow, who does our service delivery analytics sort of thing. So we want to say thank you for this team, and of course, we want to thank the, you know, the department, Chief Hurley and his staff, and all the city staff that we met with and stakeholders that we met with. Everyone was fantastic, got a good, a lot of good information on the site visit, and was able to put together, I think, a good report for you to consider. So starting off with, we understand, you know, the city of Tumwater is a 27,000 population, eighteen square miles, each household's about two and a half people per household. We evaluated the population density based on the, the census blocks for your city. That's why these odd shapes and different colors are shown here on this particular map. It shows that the heavier, darker red color is heavier density, and we have the, the scale on the left-hand side there. And, but in general, under our standard, when we evaluate this under what we call the National Fire Protection Association, and I'll refer to that as NFPA in the future, so, so it's not such a mouthful. The, the standard is anything that's above a thousand people per square mile is considered urban area. So the majority of the city is essentially urban, and I think you probably treat the entire city as an urban area under the Growth Management Act. At least that's a lot of the way the cities manage things. So we also looked at the, the call data from the department, looking from 2019 to 2023, five-year period there, or four-year period there, five years, sorry, with a total of 15,744 incidents. Now, that's just within the city of Tumwater. You have other incidents that occur outside the city under your obligation under the Medic One system, so there's, there's more call volume than, but we really focused in on the city of Tumwater. And within this, we, we learned that there's about three hun, in that period of time, about 300 total fire incidents during that period of time, and the greatest density, as you can see, is between station T1 and T2. T1 is to the south and T2 is to the north, so, right, I don't know if my mouse is gonna work, but right there's T2 and there's T1. And these are mutual aid stations from around that we also evaluate under various circumstances we'll talk about later. The, of note here though, too, is that there's a couple of pockets north of T1 and, or south of T1 and north of T2 of higher density, and those are around I-5 and intersections where there's likely car fires that are causing those sorts of incidents, or overheated brakes, or, or some sort of fire incident related. or, or some sort of fire incident related to a vehicle. So that's what those, those pockets are. Now, we look at the EMS incident density here as well, and there was about 12,000 EMS calls, 80% of your calls roughly, give or take, are EMS-related, as you probably know that. And we have a very similar sort of heat map density between station T1 and T2, but you also notice it's a little bit more diffused across the entire city, not so much concentrated in the main corridor of, of the Boulevard and I-5. So. All right, now, this particular map I want to share with you is just a little bit of a primer to talk about a couple of measures we look at when we look at emergency service deployment. This is not your city boundary. This is a simulated ABC city that we use for explanation. Actually, it's a project that we just did in Oregon, and it's their fire stations, it's the six-station department down in Oregon. And we look at two different factors. One is distribution, which is the first response unit coming from every fire facility or its location, that's considered first response unit, to begin taking actions until others arrive if needed, or if they can mitigate the incident when it's small, then they mitigate the incident when it's small. And typically, there's, there's two standards that we evaluate here. One is the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, four-minute travel time standard, which is on the left-hand pane, you can see that there's a four-minute travel time boundary around each of those fire stations. So that's the first unit expectation is you should arrive within that period of time. Washington Survey and Rating Bureau, the ISO Insurance Office that evaluates your city for insurance rates, has a little bit of a different standard, they measure by one and a half miles. But I'll show you in a map later, it's almost identical to a four-minute. So it's, it's almost six and one half distance. So generally, what I wanted to say about the, the distribution of this standard for the first response engine is that those stations and those locations should cover most of the city, not all of it, it never covers 100%, but it should cover most of the city. So, and in this situation, you can see that it does. Now, on the right-hand pane is the, a different thing that we evaluate, it's called concentration. So some types of incidents require more people than just the first engine with three or four firefighters, right? So we want all these firefighters to show up, say, a commercial structure fire, residential structure fire, hazardous materials leak, things of those, of those natures. So we want a number of firefighters to build and do simultaneous tasks, build and mitigate the incident, that's called concentration. And that is using an eight-minute travel time, okay? And you'll see on the right-hand side that the boundaries are larger from each of the facilities, and you'll see that they overlap quite a bit, and they have varying degrees of overlap, tells us how many firefighters we can get theoretically to that area. So I wanted to give you that, that little bit of a primer as well on that, before we talk about some of the other maps. And I'm sorry if I get a little bit too technical, just bump me, kick me, just tell me it's slowed down, so. Now, when I talk about effective, when we talk about the concentration of firefighters, we've referred to that in the fire service as effective response force. There's a certain, depending on the type of fire we're fighting, or the type of incident we're trying to mitigate, there's a certain number of tasks that need to get done to effectively mitigate that incident. This table here is out of NFPA 1710 that illustrates the number of firefighters that are needed to, and the tasks that are required to complete based on the type of risk that you see, and there's three different types of risks shown here. When we do a community risk assessment standard cover for a community, a little bit of a different project, we identify all the different types of risks a community could face, and we identify different levels of them, and attach that to developing a task analysis. So we do the same table for every type of risk. This is for structural fires, and you can see that it takes about 16 to 17 firefighters for a residential structure fire to, to meet all the obligations of the simultaneous task. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, gets to kind of our main recommendation for the city of Tumwater. Any questions so far? I'm kind of like jamming through this pretty fast, a lot of information. Please stop me if I look up and see if there's any hands that looks like we're doing okay? Okay, all right. Okay, so one of the first things that we did is we evaluated your two fire stations, and we evaluated the ISO or Washington Survey and Rating Bureau standard one and a half miles, okay? And you can see in this particular map, it shows that the distance of one and a half miles measured from each of the fire facilities is shown. And the green is the overlap between the two, which is not uncommon, that, that should, you should expect some overlap between the two. And you have a coverage of about six square miles of your city, total of 18 square miles, which is about 31% of your city. So there's a good portion of your city that's not covered with fire station first due response, so I want to point that out. Then we also evaluated the four-minute travel, and it's almost identical, and it's the same percentage, 31% of your city, six square miles still, and it's based on your street network that, that's very similar, and, and shows that there's quite a bit of the city that's not covered by the two fire stations. And then, and I forgot to mention this up front, but then there's also another requirement that the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau has, and that is when you have a community that has five or more buildings, or three or more stories in height, or you have large expansive buildings that have a fire flow greater than 4,000 gallons per minute, and you, you have a combination, or a combination of all those, and you do, you exceed that easily. Then you, one of the requirements of Washington Survey and Rating Bureau is that you have a ladder truck, a ladder truck and staff available within your city. You don't have that, so we evaluated your, you have non-agreement agreement with Olympia Fire, and the requirement is, is that needs to be within two and a half miles of your risk. Well, you can see in the dark blue in the top corner there, that two and a half miles is Olympia's ladder truck coverage area, so it only covers 1% of your city. So it's something, it's in the report, something to look at down the road for you to consider in terms of purchasing and staffing down the road. Okay, and then this is an illustration of measurement of your concentration. And what we did for concentration is we looked at your on-duty resources, which you have nine firefighters on duty, assuming they're not on calls and they're available, okay? You have nine on-duty resources, and then you, we utilized the local mutual aid from all departments to see what could come in within that time standard of eight minutes. And the darkest browns are the highest density of firefighters you can get in. You can see that if you were to look at 17 firefighters here over on this table, it covers about 5% of your city. So for a residential structure fire, which if you need 17 firefighters, there's only 5% of the city you're getting 17 firefighters, too. So the rest of it is you're getting fewer firefighters. So what does that mean? Well, what that means is the fire potentially could burn longer, okay, and you will eventually get it put out, or it will get away from you, that's, that's another option. The other thing is you may get some of the tasks accomplished and have to wait for additional resources a couple more minutes until they can get there. So, so there's downsides to it, and something for you to consider. So it's, it's really a determination of level of risk the community is willing to accept. I wanted to go into a little bit more detail about your Washington Survey and Rating Bureau. By the way, congratulations, you, you folks went from a, from a three, or from a four to a three here recently, that's great. There was a couple of things in the rating report I wanted to point out that the department has control over. They evaluate four different areas, fire department, communications, the water supply, and then they look at fire safety control, which is essentially, what that means is fire code enforcement, public education, and fire prevention. So those two areas that you have the most control over as a fire department is there's 38 categories that they evaluate. Of those 38 categories, the four lowest rated categories were distribution of engine companies, which we've been talking a little bit about already, and the number of company officers and qualifications thereof of the company officers, the types of training and amount of training that you're doing as a department. So the need for more multi-company drills, the need for more drills at night, the more drills with other agencies, that sort of stuff. And then reserve ladder and pumper companies, so you got marked down in that area as well. In terms of fire safety control, there are nine categories total. There are four categories you got marked low on, fire inspector qualifications, the inspection of existing structures, okay, the community education programs, and fire investigation qualifications. So those are some of the lows, or yes, ma'am.
So on the ladder truck?
Yes.
So you use data that, I mean, how many times do we, how many fires did we, that we actually needed a ladder truck? Do we have that kind of data? I mean, we don't have that many tall buildings, so I'm just curious, how does, is it because we think we need one, or is it the data match that, you know, we're not achieving that goal because, and we needed a ladder truck, so? Does that make sense?
Sorry, the number, you know, any commercial structure fire in the city, we have a ladder truck attached to that dispatch. The city of Olympia's unit has dispatched all of those commercial structure fires, so typically not on a residential fire unless there's something unique and we request them to respond. So of those, you know, I'd, I'd hate to say an exact number, we had roughly 300 fires in this period of this, you know, this, this exam. I guess I'd hesitate to say the exact number.
Yeah, how many needed a ladder truck?
Yeah, the, the thing is, though, when you need it, you really need it.
Right.
That's a critical element. It could be involved in a rescue in a multi-story building, so we need that unit there, not just for, for fire control, but potentially for rescue as well. So it's an important piece of, of a response.
One other thing I want to mention, even though we use the term ladder truck, everyone thinks, well, that's just for ladder, you need a tall ladder, that's all you need it for. Really, ladder trucks are providing ladder service, which is a lot of different things, forcible entry, ventilation, laddering the building so that firefighters up on the roof ventilating can get down if they have an emergency, search and rescue, they do a lot, there's ladder truck company work to be done, which is within that list. So just, just keep that in mind, it's not just a ladder and you don't, how many times you use a ladder, right? It's more than that, so just want to make sure we're clear. Did that get to?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
Because that's a big expense, and so I was just, yeah, curious.
Yeah, and if, I don't know if you noticed here, with this, this particular incident, on the previous slide, you could see the top of Olympia's ladder there.
Yeah, there it is.
You know, you could have let that burn down.
At this.
Why do you work so hard to see that?
That's our job, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, so the other thing, the other thing I'd like to talk about is the response performance of the organization. There's, there's a sequence of events, you know, it's a system, and, you know, some of the department has control over, some department doesn't have control over. The first element of that is the alarm handling. This is when the dispatcher picks up the 911 call, begins taking information, questions the caller, makes all the entries into the dispatch system or the CAT system, what we call it, and then notifies the fire department through the paging system. That is dispatch processing time. The standard for that is one minute, because that's a NFPA 1225 standard, national standard, one minute. The next element of this is once the fire department receives that page, they have to get moving from whatever they're doing. They could be out in the yard doing training, maintenance, they could be, you know, having dinner, whatever, war asleep. So they have to get moving, and they have to get to the unit within, if it's an EMS call, one minute. If it's a fire, they give them a 20 seconds extra, and that's because they got to put on, they got to don all the fire protection equipment gear, bunker gear, which takes extra time to kind of get, get placed on and get rolling out the door. So those are two, two standards there. Then the standard for the first unit to arrive as seen is four minutes. So you, going back to our map, we're looking at the footprints of those fire stations at four-minute travel time, that's four minutes. So think in your mind, we're accumulating this time, right? So you think about customer expectations, they call 911, where's the fire department? They want you right away, right? So we, we're now about six minutes or six minutes and 20 seconds in. So the standard that I just described, the standards there, and we call this now total response time, this is from when the 911 call occurred, the caller picked up the phone, called 911, until the first unit arrived, was, the standard is six minutes if, if it's EMS, it's six minutes and 20 seconds if it's a fire, that's the standard. So the department's performance in this area, based on that data, is nine minutes and 42 seconds. So there's some areas that the department is looking at, needs to work on. Chief and I were talking about earlier, there's some timestamping issues related to dispatch, we need to, they need to work out and investigate a little bit further. Station, the way the station is arranged has a lot to do with the deployment of firefighters from where they're at to the apparatus bay, so, so some configuration issues, I know you're looking at potentially doing some upgrades to station T2, and that might be something you want to look at, is, is improving that flow from those, from those areas.
I would just quickly add, I mean, all of you have probably been to both station one and station two. Here, here at the headquarters fire station, all the dorm rooms are upstairs, whereas at station T2, they're located directly adjacent to the bay. So as you can imagine, when you look at the data, there are different turnout times for each of those facilities.
And then the chief's got to work with the user board at the comm center to, to work through some of the dispatch processing times that might be longer than they should be.
The benchmarks, does anybody hit the benchmarks? Where do they come up with these numbers? Are there actually places?
There, there's, no, there are places that do meet the benchmarks, I won't say everyone meets the benchmark.
Right.
Yeah, so they, they, you know, a lot of people do fall short of that, but, but that is the, that's a recommended standard, and that's what, that's the best practice, right? And so we try to achieve the best practice as much as we can. Okay, I want to talk a little bit about code enforcement. What we did was we looked at kind of where the department was at in the history with code enforcement, and right now you have a fire prevention officer, soon to be retired, or is he retired?
He's retired.
He's retired now. Okay. And, and so, you know, there's been really kind of a shortage of fire inspections that are done annually, I'll just say, that based on the number of buildings that you have. You have about 1,200 occupancies within your community best, our best estimate at this point in time. The gold standard, or the standard of best practice is you should have an inspection done in every occupancy each year. If it's a high hazard occupancy, like if they hold hazardous materials, or if there's a, a high hazard process going on, like an industrial building, needs to be done twice a year, that's the, that's the, that's the standard. So you can see based on the graph here, the department's falling short of that. And there's a lot of reasons behind that. COVID had a big impact to that, okay, let's be honest, there's just nothing really happening during COVID years. And then you can see in 2022, it picked up quite a bit, but then, you know, trying to play catch-up on 2023, there's apparently some training that Mark had been through for fire investigation and his certifications, he was involved in some public education, so his time commitment to the code enforcement side of things kind of diminished on that side, okay? And then real quick, I just want to run through, we pulled up some publicly available data showing the building structures of different categories and the numbers of buildings. Of course, there may be more than one occupancy in a building, but, so the numbers aren't going to match up, but 352 industrial buildings, which are mostly in the, in the north end and down south of T1. And then you've got 415 commercial buildings along the Capitol Boulevard and I-5, you can see that there. And then there's 274 government, educational, or utility-type structures that, they're kind of smattered across the city as well. So there's a, there's a big, there's a big impact, a big code enforcement impact going on. And, and then in terms of, one of the other responsibilities that this person has is community risk reduction in general, public education, instructing the community what they need to do to prevent harm to themselves and to, to help reduce fire incidents and other types of health and safety incidents. So you can see the percentage of time that community events were the highest involvement, fire prevention education's 26%, and then right along since 18%. The, the curve is going down as far as the, the participation, COVID again had a lot to do with that, so we'd like to kind of see that public education increasing year after year, right? So there needs to be a lot higher emphasis in, in code enforcement and public education is the message, so we're trying to let you folks know. Also, we did, part of this, we did this fantastic strategic planning process where we took in internal. Also, we did part of this, we did this fantastic strategic planning process where we took in internal, how am I doing on time? By the way, I'm kind of running over, I'll, I'll go faster, I promise. Uh, we did, we did this, uh, community, uh, we invited some community members in, got some feedback from them. We got some really great, uh, uh, expectations, response and service, financial sustainability, uh, matching the service with the growth. You're a very fast, a fairly fast-growing community and expected to do so. Uh, community outreach and optimized relationships with other parties around the community to, uh, provide efficiencies. And then, uh, then the fire department, we did an internal survey. Uh, we got great participation by the crew, 79%, which is really high compared to some of the other organizations we've worked with. Did a two-day work session with a group, about 20 individuals. We did a number of different exercises over those two days. You can see all the sticky notes that we use. We, we use a lot of sticky notes in the process. Uh, we do good, better, different sort of exercises. And we narrowed this down to themes and then built strategies around these themes. And the strategies, and we also reworked the mission, vision, value statement for the organization and, um, and then come up with the strategic goals and objectives. So there are six strategic goals which line up with the city's goals, by the way, uh, very closely. And also lines up with community expectations. So provide safe, timely and effective response. Improve services and strengthen the cooperative services, or buy, uh, strengthening cooperative services. Enhance the training programs. Implement a communication strategy both internal of the organization to make sure, this is really impressive and important for this organization. That, that there's a lot of discussion about, hey, we have a culture, we want to sustain this culture. We want to communicate internally when someone's not meeting that culture or when someone is, we want to reward them. So that was really great to hear and see that sort of thing. So there's communication strategy going inside the organization and then also communications out to the community about what they need to do to protect themselves. Ensure effective, um, recruitment and retention of personnel, getting good people in the door and keeping good people in the organization. Maintaining that high standard and improve employee wellness, both health and physical, uh, physical, physicality. Okay, uh, future incident analysis, I won't bore you with this, but this is from Thurston County's Regional Planning Council. You're, you're growing on average over the next 20 years about one and a half percent in population. Over the next 10 years, you're looking to be adding about 5,000 residents to the city of Tumwater. It's pretty, pretty rapid growth, uh, and that's going to bring other things too, you know, ancillary things, businesses as well. More people means more impact on emergency services, both police and fire. Uh, in terms of where folks are going to be congregating, where people congregate, where they're at, there's going to be more volume. This is your urban growth area boundaries and zoning and in the west and to the south is where most of that growth is going to occur. Okay? And then we project out, uh, going forward, what the call volume would look like based on the current ratio of calls to person, per person right now. And project out your population going forward. And so, uh, you're expected by, in 10 years to increase by 1,200 incidents. And that's just within the city of Tumwater. Again, that doesn't include the EMS calls or outside the city, uh, that are also impacting the organization. So recommendations. So we think one of the biggest recommendations is what the city needs to look at, improving its effective response force. Adding more personnel, per shift, uh, to the, the whole system so that you can get closer to that 16 firefighters to at least fight a residential fire. Uh, most communities can't fight the hot, you know, the high rises, uh, they have to call in mutually to do that. We wouldn't expect your community size to do that. Even some of the bigger commercial buildings, you're going to call, mutually in, but at least a community of this size should be able to do a residential fire. So that means that we're recommending you add a fourth firefighter to each shift, to each station, so that you can get the numbers up. Uh, you're already contemplating the two, uh, new EMS people for a medic unit at T2, which is going to help. And so with that, you increase your, um, effective response force from within the city from nine to 13, which gets you quite a bit closer. So that, that'd be a great advantage if you do that. Alternatively, instead of doing the fourth person on the engine company, and I know the chief has been talking about this too, perfectly reasonable option, is to add a, uh, two-person aid unit at station T1. And it still gets you the same number of firefighters. In fact, it may provide much better value for you because that provides a lot more flexibility in response. And, uh, you can, you know, move crews back and forth a little bit more quickly, so. So that's one recommendation. The other recommendation is that your, your footprint of your stations is really lacking for the size of your, your city. You need to look into the future of adding a third fire station. Trying to get that up, uh, in terms of the coverage. We did do kind of a preliminary analysis, um, just take kind of our gut, hey, let's put a station here and see what it looks like. So we did that. This shows that, uh, you increase the four-minute response area from 31% to 37 with putting a station on the west side. And however the count of structures, you're capturing about 61% of all the structures with those three stations, okay? Then we put one down south and, um, it captures a much larger area because of the street network is different. So you're capturing 52%, or excuse me, 53% of, uh, the service area. And, but you're capturing less buildings. But consider you're growing in that area down the road. So it's something you're going to have to look at. Uh, chief has indicated that your GIS is look, is willing to help and do some further analysis, a little deeper dive into this and, and, uh, determine what might be the best location for your community. Uh, then, uh, we believe that, uh, the importance of the position of fire marshal is, is critical for moving the program forward for your community risk reduction. And so we have recommended that you develop an assistant chief position, a fire marshal, so you can draw the expertise and experience from outside the organization to come in, to fill that role. They can build you a new community risk reduction program and develop that further out into the future years. And then, um, the other part of this, the fire chief is trying to run a fire department. And of this size community, based on my experience and what I've seen in other communities, there's no way he can really do an adequate job managing emergency management. So you really have, you have lots of choices. You could hire a full-time emergency manager, you could hire a part-time emergency manager. You can contract for service from a private provider. You could do, uh, conduct a, uh, interlocal agreement with a local agency. Thurston County Emergency Management, City of Olympia, Lacey, Fire District 3, you have options available to you. Someone that kind of can focus on those efforts, build the program to meet your needs for the big disaster and, uh, allow the chief to build and manage the organization effectively. Is that a little bit too much obvious of a plug? Sorry about that. So. Uh, then the last recommendation is, is that, um, there's really some great partnerships that are, that have been talked about, uh, in the past and, and need to continue to be talked about. One good way to kind of bring departments and organizations together and improve the safety of the organization is to consolidate their training programs into one. So that, and so our recommendation is to look at city of Olympia, since they have a training facility, you have one common practice, one set of policies, one set of training, uh, ways of doing things. So that safety is improved for the organization. And, there you go. All right, there we go. Not too bad, right?
Thank you.
A little over.
Any question?
I have a dumb question, probably.
No, not, no, nothing.
So the airport, it's port property, but if there were to be, like, during the airshow, say, some catastrophic event, does the port have its own fire department or would we be responsible for that?
That's a very good question. Uh, the port does not have their own fire department and we do provide services for the port. Um, specifically for the airshow, uh, they're required to have a staffed fire, they call it ARF, Aircraft Rescue Firefighting Unit, on scene during the airshow or they can't have the airshow. So we, we provide that service, they actually cover the overtime cost of us doing that. Uh, so we, yes, we cover the airport. Uh, we don't currently have a response agreement, it's something I've talked to them about working on. We've had one in the past where, where they basically paid for training for our staff. Uh, they've also in past years provided a vehicle, um, and so we'll be talking to them more, more about that. But yes, we do respond to incidents, not just at the structures, but also aircraft incidents at the port.
I was just wondering if that would be an opportunity for, I mean, because we'll respond obviously if something happens and other ports have their own fire department.
Correct, yeah. Uh, and, and the dynamic will change a bit too, if they, if they reestablish, um, passenger service as well. They'll, they'll have a hu- much higher level of requirement at that point, uh, for service at the airport.
So during the flight through the airshow, then we take one unit out. So the whole day, we have one truck that isn't available to?
We, we staff an extra unit. We staff an extra engine company, a command unit, and as staffing permits, actually a medic unit there onsite as well. So it doesn't take away from any, um, response units in the city during airshow, it's extra staffing.
Any questions online? Great information and I, and I know we have a lot to catch up on. Well aware.
I, I, I feel like we've made good progress in a lot of areas and just, I really appreciate the fact that we can get kind of an outside look at, at how we do business. Because, you know, you don't always hear the things you want to hear, but you have to do that to really improve, so.
And we are growing fast. And I would say that we're probably over the 28,000 now.
Are you? Really?
I believe, I think we had just a brand new census that came out and I think it just picked us over the 28,000.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, Chuck was wearing around 28,000. Yeah. Or 23, so. Yeah. Yeah. No, I, I think we just clicked over the 28,000. There's another, I'm sorry, I need to go, but you had this whole thing about, uh, condition of fire when you do the facility rating system. So, you know, you've got from, you know, excellent to poor. So I was just curious, where are we, is the highlighted piece, are we poor or is that what? Because you have the general condition of the fire stations, but it doesn't have what category falls into an ESCI facility rating system?
I don't have to look at that specific page, um, what, I don't have it.
Okay, 81 is our fire, our fire stations and then 80 is the page that has the rating system? I was just curious.
So what station is that?
For both, you guys have, um, general condition for both of our fire stations there, T1 and T2. And it talks about, oh, I guess it's in fair condition. Okay, we're in fair.
Yeah, okay, I was surprised when you said poor, I was like, the only concern really, or not the only, but the primary concern that we have with fire stations is you have workout facilities in the apparatus base. Uh, there's a lot of carcinogens with diesel exhausts, even though you may have dropdown systems, it doesn't get it 100%. Those need to be segregated with its own HVAC system. And so really that should be a big effort, uh, being made, but yeah.
Um, yeah, we, I, and I know the city is, uh, we've done considerable, um, improvements at, you know, station T1 has had new siding, new roofing, everything since it's been built, we just did the kitchen remodel. Um, so, uh, the city has been continuing to invest in, in facilities.
Yeah.
T2 is the one sober by Michael T., right?
Correct.
And that one has always had a problem with the gas, we've talked about that years ago about, uh, you know, the.
Exhaust.
The exhaust, that we have a mitigated diet.
Yeah, well, we, we did, we did mitigate it in that, um, uh, through grant funding, uh, and certainly some city support in that. Both stations now have exhaust capture systems. So there's literally a hose that connects to the exhaust of the apparatus that they connect when it pulls in. And it automatically disconnects when it exits. So, yes, several years ago, it was a real issue before we had exhaust capture that we did.
Yeah.
Yeah. But even those, and, and it's not a hundred percent. And there's still some carcinogens coming out, so, yeah. All right.
Oh, uh, Peter, do you have, Confinberg, Bobby, do you have your hand up? It's yellow does not show very well on the.
Yeah, I do have some process question for Chief Ollie. So Chief Ollie?
Go ahead.
I see in the presentation, there are about, uh, three or four recommendations that, uh, that was presented tonight. And, uh, I don't recall, uh, this ever being discussed at, at the Public and Safety, uh, Committee, uh, meetings. Did I miss something?
Uh, no, I, and maybe a city administrator can speak to this as well. Um, we chose this to bring it to the work sessions for all council members to, uh, to see, uh, rather than starting off at Public Health and Safety Committee.
So then it is my, uh, it is my, um, I'm guessing then that this is going to come back to the Public and Safety Committee for the proper process to take place then?
No, there's, um, so similar to the police department's strategic growth plan, these are operational plans. So these plans are used internally by the departments to inform their plans for budgets and, um, you know, for identifying the things that they need to do operationally. So there isn't an approval process, this is not, it's not like a comprehensive plan for the overall community. Um, those are operational plans that, that are basically complete at this point and are, um, uh, you're getting briefed on sort of what their, um, uh, this is going to be what they point to when they, when they come to you for a budget proposal and you're saying, well, why in the world would you want that much money, Chief Ollie? And he's going to say, well, remember that day back in a hundred degree day in, in July and, and, um, this is what we, um, have in our strategic growth, our strategic plan, so.
Thank you.
Does that answer? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, this is very helpful identification.
Hopefully it wasn't too much technical stuff thrown at you.
And I'm available if people have further questions. If you have further questions, please reach out.
Yeah, it's pretty big, so. Great.
Pleasure being here, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. All right, our next item is the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Tumwater and the Confederate tribes of the Chehalis Association. And the county, or, uh, city administrator Parks will start.
So I will make this, um, brief, hopefully. So, um, we have tonight with us, uh, Harry Hesman, who is the legal counsel for the, um, uh, Chehalis tribe. We've been working with them since late last year, actually, on this project. And so we're here to give you a briefing and, and, um, we are asking for your consideration of a recommendation that would, uh, take this agreement to, uh, the council meeting next week. Um, and there are some timeline implications for this and I'm hoping that I'm going to work, I did, I pressed the right button. Um, so generally speaking, uh, the tribe has, um, been in the process of purchasing property from the Kaufman Group. Uh, the area that you see outlined here, unfortunately, the outline piece didn't show up, but there is, um, does this have a pointer on it? No?
I just click through, hold on.
Which one's the pointer? Big circle one, oh, look, okay. So this area that's, um, uh, outlined here, this is down off of, uh, 93rd, um, near the interchange. The tribe's Flying J facility is right here to the south of 93rd. So this is a property that Kaufman, um, platted for, um, uh, business purposes. It's an industrial plat, um, not very long ago. Uh, the tribe is wanting to purchase this property, um, in its entirety. Um, and so they approached us several months ago about, um, their plans and what, uh, an agreement might look like if they were to, um, uh, uh, move forward with their plans, um, uh, in the future here in purchasing this property from the Kaufman Group. So what the agreement does is it outlines the different responsibilities and agreements that we've negotiated between the two parties with regard to what it is that they are wanting to do with the project and how that would, um, uh, what we would do to help facilitate that moving forward. Generally speaking, they are interested in, um, vacating this plat and vacating the public road that was designated. Go back one. So the roadway here. So, the roadway here that's been platted, that has been built, um, but they would prefer, and the city would actually concur, if they're going to own the entirety of that property, that that road be vacated, and they would still own the road and maintain it, but then it would no longer be a public road that we would be obligated to, uh, maintain. So, uh, in considering that, that was the, essentially, the first request. But then the other reality is, um, until the property goes into trust, if they come in to apply for building permits, um, from the city, the, the lot lines themselves might be problematic. So, in their, um, uh, they are considering that upon taking possession of this property, they might go through a, uh, plat vacation process. So, one of our first agreements is, um, that we would, uh, review and, and help facilitate the process of vacating the plat, um, which basically just gets rid of the, it's, it's a subdivision in reverse, takes it back to its original, uh, its original, um, single parcel.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, moving forward then, so, um, uh, they also would look at whether or not, uh, the road location, it's built already, so I feel, I feel like their intent is to try and do their development considerate of where that is already, but should they need to move, uh, the road or any utilities that are currently installed, installed within the roadway, we would agree to, uh, collaborate on that and review, uh, those proposals and, um, and provide them with feedback and, and information. We are currently funded and beginning to pro, uh, the process of doing an interchange study for that particular intersection, um, excuse me, that interchange. We are including them, uh, proactively as participants and stakeholders in that process, so they'll have an opportunity to get in on the ground floor in terms of the changes to, um, that could be included in the, in the interchange itself to help serve their, their project, uh, ultimately. And then, there are stormwater maintenance agreements, um, and once they take possession and they take control of the property, particularly once it, it's in trust, uh, they would no longer need those maintenance agreements. So, if needed, we would consider modifying or extinguishing those, uh, stormwater maintenance agreements in the future if, if that became necessary. So, the tribe's responsibilities in this, they would initiate the plat vacation process if that's the, if that's what they choose in terms of moving forward. They're acknowledging that they would own and maintain the roadway. They're acknowledging that if they need to or want to relocate roads and utilities, they would pay for those, uh, and, and collaborate with the city and any other state agencies that might have, uh, participation in that. Um, they are acknowledging that there are existing easements in place, and they would make sure that those are maintained or that, um, some replacement, if, if necessary for relocation purposes, that the intent of those easements would remain, whatever that easement is, um, is serving, that they would continue to, um, to honor those. Anytime you vacate a road right-of-way in the state of Washington, the, the city jurisdiction that owns that right-of-way is required to get half the appraised, uh, value of that in some form of compensation. Um, in conversations with the tribe, we've acknowledged that, um, there may be a need for right-of-way dedication for the future interchange project. We're anticipating that there will need to be that, and so that is, um, something in the agreement. They're recognizing that there's a value that needs to come back to the city in terms of that right-of-way vacation, and if so, um, that there might be a potential exchange of, um, future road, uh, or, excuse me, future dedications of property to, um, to be added to the right-of-way profile that we would find necessary following the outcome of the interchange study. And then, they are understanding and acknowledging that, um, the Kaufman plat had a certain amount of development capacity that it was anticipating, and they're acknowledging and agreeing that they would address any additional road safety and concurrency issues that are related to their future development, particularly where that future development that they're proposing might go above and beyond what was originally projected for, uh, for the Kaufman plat. So, uh, we do have a requested action. We, we would like to ask that you place the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Tumwater and the Confederate Tribes on the, uh, City Council Consent Calendar with a recommendation to approve and authorize the mayor to sign. Their agreement with, their purchase and sale agreement with Kaufman's has already been extended once in order to allow us to continue this, uh, work, and so they would like to have our agreement, uh, executed with their tribal council before the end of July in order to finalize the sale and perfect, um, uh, the process. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and Harry's here as well, so I'm sure he'd be able to help if there are questions that I don't have the technical, uh, expertise.
I see, I see nodding of agreement here.
I was just looking at that one part. Is this the one you were talking about, that, um, notwithstanding anything, uh, herein, the tribe acknowledges that in order to vacate legacy courts, so that's what it was named before?
Please, so...
The city organizations require the property owner to pay the city 50% of the appraised value of the road, and then, uh, they mutually agree on the, the price and everything. So, in lieu of, it doesn't, it just talks about may satisfy this obligation by dedicating to the city for street or other municipal purposes? Is that what we're talking about?
Yep.
Yeah, because we don't have anything black and white to act like.
Right, that's what I was just, yeah. I know it has to be kind of vague, but I was just curious if that's where it was talked.
Yeah, that is the language specifically that, um, hopefully, when we get through the interchange study, and really, the timing is, is really great, in terms of the tribe's, um, plans and being able to, um, uh, and understand and envision what their plan is and be able to incorporate that into the interchange calculations, and the study is really a fantastic opportunity right now, and, but we don't know...
Where are we doing that one, the study? Is it even, when is the study, have you started?
They, the request for qualifications for the engineering has gone out, and they are, I believe, they've already, um, started on that, yeah. I believe it's grant-funded.
You doing this? Sorry.
I know, there's so many things, I know.
I wasn't aware of that one. I mean, we've talked about it, but I just wasn't aware that we have the wheels in motion, so that's very good.
I can, um, I can bring you some additional information about the study very soon.
So, I see nodding, and so I take it we will be moving this forward to the consent, uh, agenda item on our council meeting next Tuesday. Perfect. Oh, this is one of the easiest things.
It really has been, um, we're very appreciative to Harry and the group, um, Brandon, Dan, Karen, Alex, in community development, it's been a concerted effort, um, and collaborative one, and it's been...
And chair of the council.
Yep, it's been great. Thank you.
All right. So, now we're down to, you don't, you, you're probably ready to go, right? Um, we're down to the city administrator mayor's report.
I have a quick report, and then I got a couple of minutes here, so... So, July 4th was a success. Um, I, um, have heard that from many people already. We had basically 86 entries in the parade, which sounds like it's a very typical 12,000 people at the Fun Festival. Pretty normal activities reported from the, both the police and fire station, and so just a huge thank you to all of the staff, uh, that make it happen, police, fire, parks and rec, but also, you know, the operations folks out in transportation, and, um, it really is a, an all-hands-on-deck kind of an effort, and we're very appreciative. Water Resources and Sustainability has been working their magic, and we were notified late last week of, um, three new grant awards from Department of Ecology totaling $857,000. There's a nutrient reduction enhanced plan improvement that, uh, for $170,000 related to stormwater. Pioneer Park Repair and Restoration Phase II, the construction dollars, $500,000, and then Beehive Industrial Area Stormwater Retrofit Design for $187,000. And so, all of those monies are very, um, much appreciated, and, um, that's how we are, uh, able to continue to do a lot of these projects. Also, from Water Resources, the increased temperatures means that we've had a significant increase in water use. Uh, so, on Monday, yesterday, we reached 6 million gallons in one day for the first time in, uh, the year. That's two and a half times the consumption on an average winter day. So, the message is conservation. Uh, water, um, uh, lawns only when the soil is dry, uh, early in the morning, late at night, or even consider letting it go dormant, uh, take shorter showers, and, uh, check for leaks inside and out, and then repair them, uh, as soon as possible. And then the last thing, um, General Government Committee needed to schedule a special meeting. That's scheduled now for July 17th, next week at 8:00 AM. That's, uh, because the, um, uh, with Councilmember Dahlhoff out, uh, Councilmember Althouser had to, uh, have to make an emergency or a unplanned trip out of the state, and so, uh, we checked in, um, other than, uh, Councilmember Caffey potentially being on jury duty, um, that should work, um, next week on the 17th, Wednesday morning at 8:00 AM. And then, uh, a reminder, um, next Tuesday, the 16th, there are going to be some items, they're all, um, uh, construction-related items on consideration that you haven't seen yet in either a committee meeting or in, um, a work session, and that's because, uh, we need to, we are hoping to get action on those. They're construction projects that we want to get going before the, the August reset. So, when those packets come out, please make sure that if you have any questions about those projects that are on the considerations list, that you reach out to me or, or the particular staff person, and, um, we're happy to answer any questions. So, you will get presentations about those items, but you just haven't seen them before, so... And that's all I have.
So, and the only thing I want to say is I want to just thank staff and everyone for making our huge event of the 4th of July such a success. Takes a lot of work, and, and, and I'm still in shock that a lot of, that after the fireworks is done, they still have to clean up, make sure that that golf course is ready for in the morning. So, you know, staff on the 4th of July is not a holiday for them, so I really want to, uh, express my appreciation for all their work, so... If there's nothing else, uh, we are adjourned, and thank you, everyone.
Do we have any fireworks fires?
Um, yeah, we had a brush fire, it's always hard to say.
What it was?
No.